On air.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm going to do a virtual gavel this evening to call our meeting to order. I welcome everyone to the March 23rd Special City Council Meeting, and I'm calling it to order. The purpose of tonight's special meeting is to provide an update on the city's COVID-19 response and address a few items requiring council action and discussion. Before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. On March 6th, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. Due to the civil emergency and in consideration for the health and safety of our council members and staff and the public, tonight's meeting is being held remotely. The audio of the meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later listening on the city's YouTube channel. There will be no meeting video. Due to this, tonight's staff presentations will be verbal only. Be prepared to reference the material in tonight's online agenda packet. In order to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, our city clerk, Tina Eggers, is in the council chambers, and the room is open to members of the public. The room has been physically modified to promote safety for those attending. City clerk will let me know if there are any attendees in the room. Tina, is there anyone with you this evening?
There is not.
Thank you. And as tonight is a special meeting, there's not an audience comment portion of the meeting. However, the council president will be acknowledging comments that have been received by email on tonight's agenda items as part of her comments. At this point, we'll take a moment to do a roll call of council members in attendance. Please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle.
Here.
Councilmember Goodman.
Here.
Councilmember Hall.
Here.
Council President Hunt.
Here.
Councilmember Marks.
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh.
Here.
Thanks. That's all seven accounted for. In addition, the following city staff are in attendance remotely. City Administrator Wally Bobkowicz, and I can see by the icons that Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder has joined us as well. We have city attorney Jim Haney, Deputy City Clerk Tisha Giescher, Parks and Community Services Director Jeff Watling, Human Services and Social Sustainability Coordinator Monica Negula, Senior Planner Kristen Leeson, and Economic Development Manager Jen Davis Hayes. We also have representatives from the three local agencies impacted by tonight's agenda item AB 7948. So pardon me if I am not good with pronunciation. Usually I have a chance at the beginning of the meeting or before the meeting to go and ask. So Lucy Payat representing Hope Link, Lori Burrell and Elaine Davis representing Issaquah Community Services, Carol and Jim Hollis representing St. Vincent de Paul. Is there anyone on the meeting this evening that I have missed? If so, please identify yourself. I'm not hearing of anyone. So lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. Please indicate when you wish to speak using the meeting Skype Messenger conversation. I understand City Administrator Bobkowicz and Councilmember Ray will be using text messaging to let me know that they actually want to get in the queue to speak. For those on the phone, I will pause at the appropriate time so that you can indicate that you want to speak. And if you could please mute your microphone when you're not speaking, that will help the sound quality. For all meeting attendees, please state your name each time before speaking. And for council members, that includes before you ask a question, make a second, or make a motion, or second a motion, or to participate in debate. Please speak clearly and pause frequently. The first item on the agenda this evening, item A, is the COVID-19 report. It is the mayor's report. Last week, I issued two emergency proclamations, one for a temporary moratorium on late fees for tenants, and the other to temporarily suspend the paper bag fee. More emergency proclamations may be forthcoming as the situation evolves, and I'd like to outline the process. State law allows the city to declare an emergency, which is the one I declared on March 6th. Once an emergency is declared, I have certain authority under state law and the city's comprehensive emergency management plan to take emergency actions, such as the two emergency proclamations that were issued on March 19th. It's recommended that some emergency powers, such as suspension of the paper bag fee, also should be ratified by the city council. The administration is consulting with the city attorney to follow the proper process for these emergency actions. In either case, the city council will be kept apprised of all proclamations. And once a proclamation is signed and sealed, it will be then sent out to the public through our various communication channels and posted to our website. Thanks to those of our staff that are working on the front line, police, fire, and EMTs, and Parks and Public Works Operations workers, they are all still out in the community and responding to the changing situation on a daily basis. And thanks to all of our city staff who are working from home or taking on new assignments in support of the emergency. Your flexibility to allow us to reshape our city team in a moment of crisis is so very much appreciated. And lastly, for tonight's meeting, I have also asked our city administrator to give a special report. City Administrator Bobkowicz will now give an update on the city's COVID-19 response. Wally?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I wanted to take a few minutes to talk about the things that we are doing to address this emergency. We have been working largely at home. Those employees can work at home, are working at home, and I think that has certainly helped. We are about 10 days into that, and I think that we've still been able to be very effective in serving the public. Of course, there are those roles and responsibilities that we're not able to do remotely. And again, as the mayor mentioned, I would want to commend our staff, who are on the front lines every day, addressing issues. It's clear that business is not as usual, that the city of Issaquah, in order to address the issues faced by the COVID-19 crisis, has had to change how we do business. And what I did last week was ask our staff to really pivot the work that they're doing into a few very specific areas to focus on the health and safety of our community. And Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to spend a few minutes talking about those specific areas and the work that we've been doing. And that's the conclusion of my comments. Would be happy to answer any questions. Clearly, in the face of this civil emergency, public safety is the most important thing, and our first priority is making sure that the Issaquah Police Department and the Eastside Fire and Rescue Department have the resources that they need. We have been working very closely together with both police and fire. We've been looking very carefully at the resources that our police department needs, staffing resources, equipment resources, flexibility to do their jobs. All of those things have been put in place. Clearly, as we look to the future, we want to make sure that the Issaquah Police Department has the resources and staffing that it needs to keep our community safe, and this has been a major focus of ours. I'm pleased to say so far, we've had no issues with the police, other than an issue that I think all law enforcement and fire emergency service agencies are facing, and that is the ability to have proper protective equipment. We are able to make sure that our police officers and firefighters are properly equipped, but this is an ongoing process, and we are going to continue to work very closely with our state and county partners to make sure that both of our police and fire departments have the emergency protective gear that they need. So we have been focused first and foremost on public safety. Second area is communications. We want to make sure that our residents receive information about what we're doing, receive information about what's happening, both at the county and state level. As I know, the council is aware, the governor has made some additional proclamations and orders this evening that in 48 hours, the majority of businesses will close, except those essential services. We are sharing that information. We are sharing the information. As things change here in Issaquah, we've redone our website. We have done videos featuring the mayor and the council president. We will continue to use videos. They've been very well received by the community. We have created a special email address, help@issaquawa.gov, so individuals who are looking for specific pieces of information can email us at that telephone number, excuse me, at that email address, and we continue to answer phones as people need. So communications has been a key part of our outreach and our response, and I'm very pleased to report that we've been doing a very good job within the area of communications. Issue of human services, one that we have been focusing more and more on in the city of Issaquah, certainly given the civil emergency requires even more of our efforts. And we have worked to pivot additional individuals on our city staff to work on human service issues. We have at least one major issue on the agenda this evening, which we'll talk about a little more. But clearly, this is a long-term issue. This is something that the city of Issaquah is going to need to focus on as we move forward, and the staff and I hope to bring to the council in the coming weeks additional information and additional requests for programs and services and financial support to not only help individuals here in Issaquah, but also our nonprofit organizations. We have been working very closely with several of them, the Issaquah Food Bank probably first among them, and we'll continue to work very closely with them. The mayor, as she had mentioned, had a proclamation regarding evictions and late fees for that. We are going to continue to make information available, so if individuals are charged late fees for rent, that we will provide support to them, and we'll have information on our website regarding that. So in the area of human services, that's something that we are going to continue to focus on. Next is economic development. Businesses throughout our community are being severely impacted by the closings, by the changes caused by this emergency. Jen Davis Hayes, our Economic Development Manager, has been leading a team of staff working every day with our stakeholder groups, with individual businesses, to make sure that we're doing what we can. Quite honestly, at this early stage, there's not a lot that we're able to do, but we're going to continue to share information the best that we can. The city, I implemented a plan to provide a $25 a day per diem for our employees to purchase food and beverages here in Issaquah. This is something that I felt strongly was an important economic development tool to continue to patronize our restaurants and other food-serving businesses, as well, quite frankly, as to provide some additional support for our employees. And I think from a morale standpoint, I anecdotally have been hearing from both the managers and employees that this has been well received, and we've also heard anecdotally from our businesses. So this is a program that we will continue to evaluate each pay period. It has to be spent on food here in Issaquah, and we'll continue to do that. The last area that our Economic Development Manager Jen Davis Hayes is focused on is the reuse of the Holiday Inn. As I know you are aware, King County has a one-year lease on the now former Holiday Insight, and they are working to reuse that facility as a care facility. We have had discussions with King County just a couple of days ago. They continue to map their plans for that facility. They have committed to keep us posted. We are going to be working on having additional community dialogue as they decide what they would like to use that facility for. Their early estimates at this point is that they're still a minimum three weeks away from using the Holiday Insight, and so we will keep the community and the city council apprised. And then the last area that is a focus is infrastructure, working with our Public Works Operations staff, water, sewer, stormwater, street infrastructure is very important. We have split our Public Works Operations staff into two teams, an A-team and B-team, one working on, two weeks off, two weeks. This is to make sure that there's any illness among the teams, that there is no sharing of that illness that would have an impact on our providing critical municipal services. So that is going very well. We continue to maintain our water, sewer, stormwater, street infrastructure as needed throughout the community. So those are the five areas that we really, as municipal government, have been focusing on. These are supported, of course, by our other operating departments, our Human Resources Department, our Information Technology Department. We have been so fortunate to be so well-staffed and prepared by our Information Technology Department that our transition to a work-at-home administrative staff has really been aided by the work of our Information Technology Staff and our finance staff. As we move forward and look toward the coming weeks, I am concerned that we make sure that we are looking at our expenditures, that we are spending money in keeping with the current environment and the current emergency, and we'll continue to report to the city council as we move forward on finance issues. Our plan currently is to have a presentation at your next regular council meeting on April the 6th, where we will talk more specifically of our estimates for our current financial condition as we move forward. So Madam Mayor, members of the council, I cannot tell you how proud I am to be working with such a talented group of dedicated individuals, of people who are still continuing to work very diligently for the city of Issaquah, also dealing with the COVID-19 crisis and their own families, but continuing to come to work. Very proud of that. And Madam Mayor, happy to answer any questions that you or the council may have.
Thank you, Administrator Bobkowicz. Does the council have any questions on the city administrator's report?
Mayor Paulie, I would like to ask a question. This is Barb De Michelle.
Yes, Councilmember De Michelle. Have you got opened the messaging portion of your Skype meeting?
I do, and I just put, "I have a question," but I don't know if it showed up.
Ah, excellent. Let's see. It did show up now, yes. Okay, so let's start with Councilmember De Michelle.
Oh, I am just wondering about the childcare that was opened on Friday. How is that going? And are we providing that for our employees free, or are they helping to offset the cost of that?
Again, this is City Administrator Bobkowicz, Councilmember De Michelle, members of the council. This is something we are providing free of charge to our employees and the employees of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Department. It is a slower start than we had hoped. We've discovered that a number of our employees have made alternate plans, and so we are seeing a slower pickup of that. But we're very pleased with the initial response that we've received. We also continue to work with the Issaquah School District as they are transitioning into daycare themselves. We hope to then transition the employees of the city staff, as well as the Eastside Fire and Rescue, to the Issaquah School District Program.
Does that answer your question, Councilmember De Michelle?
Yes, thank you very much.
Next up, I have Councilmember Goodman with a question.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Goodman. My question is, I would assume that we would have, well, I don't want to assume, but I would have thought we would have heard, but I haven't heard anything, so I'll ask the question. Do we have any employees who have tested positive or any who are in quarantine?
We are unaware of any that have tested positive. There are several employees, for various circumstances and reasons, that are in self-quarantine. We continue to monitor their conditions, and our Human Resources staff has regular check-ins with them.
And a follow-up question, please. If we, I guess, I would think that if we got into a position where we had some staffing issues because of quarantines, then the council would be made aware of that?
Currently, we have no issue. We're able to cover appropriate shifts, but as I've said, we, again, there are different circumstances involving several employees, and we're monitoring those closely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. At this point in time, I'm not seeing any additional questions, but I will have a slow cog here to see if there's any others. Okay, thank you. Seeing none, move to item C, which is AB 7948, Issaquah Rental and Mortgage Emergency Assistance Program. And the request before you this evening is to authorize the program. City Administrator Bobkowicz will be introducing this item, and I would like council members to hold questions until the end of the presentation. You will have an opportunity to ask questions of both the city administrator and all of the agency reps that are waiting on the line as well. So if you just want to send me an indication by message that you have a question, I'll start keeping a list of the queue. And City Administrator Bobkowicz?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. We're here this evening with a proposal for a program that would provide housing assistance for both homeowners and renters, AB 7948. The requested action before you is to establish the Issaquah Rental and Mortgage Emergency Assistance Program and authorize funding of $100,000 for those affected by the COVID-19 crisis. Number two, authorizing the mayor to execute contract amendments with Issaquah Community Services, St. Vincent de Paul, St. Joseph Conference, Issaquah, and Hope Link to provide these emergency funds to Issaquah residents in need of assistance, and to authorize the finance director to include $100,000 from the general fund in a subsequent 2020 budget amendment. The agenda bill outlines the proposed program. In addition, today, I provided the city council with two summary documents, which have been added to the agenda packet. One is a document that summarizes the assistance program as is outlined in the agenda bill, and that is found on page 15 of the revised agenda packet, which is currently online. And then a question-and-answer sheet that is also provided, and that is found beginning on page 17 of the agenda packet. So Madam Mayor, what I'd like to do is to, for the purposes of those individuals who are listening in, to walk through the proposed program as outlined on page 15, and then also to walk through the questions and answers. Members of the city council have provided some questions over the course of several days, and so the questions-and-answer document focuses on that. But first, the program that is being proposed, we are asking that the council allocate $100,000 toward this program for rental and mortgage assistance. Residents of Issaquah meeting income requirements at or below 120% of the area median income, or $114,000 per year for a household of four who need temporary financial assistance. This assistance would be up to $500 a month for up to three months within one 12-month period. We're proposing that this assistance be distributed by three nonprofits that we, the city of Issaquah already has contracts with to provide these types of services, the Issaquah Community Services, the St. Vincent de Paul, St. Joseph Conference, Issaquah, and Hope Link. The process for receiving these monies would be as follows: that the organizations would receive requests for services, conduct screening by phone, and an application process to determine eligibility, and provide assistance to the property manager or bank as appropriate. The requirements of the contract, if the council were to move forward with this program, the mayor would be authorized to amend existing agreements. The funds would be provided using a service reimbursement model. The city will not pay upfront. Organizations will provide invoices to the city, and the city will reimburse them. Invoices will include the number of residents served, type of assistance provided, demographic information regarding residents served, to include at the minimum age, household information, income level, and resident status. The administration recommends that the distribution of the $100,000 to these organizations be based on agency capacity and local presence for easy access for residents. If approved, the administration will work on a budget and contract amendments with the organization. At this time, to allow for flexibility, the administration proposes not setting an exact amount for each organization, rather following council authorization, the administration would proceed to split the funding between the three agencies based on the agency's capacity to distribute the funds and accessibility to Issaquah residents. So from that proposal have come a number of questions from the city council, and we have detailed the answers in writing, beginning on page 17 of the revised packet, so I'd like to go through them. The first question is, how did this item come before the city council? It came, it sprung out of a discussion on March 18th, the weekly council leadership meeting. The mayor, myself, the deputy city administrator, the council president, the council deputy president, and councilmember Hall discussed urgent next steps the city could take to respond to needs resulting from the COVID-19 emergency. The consensus of the group was for the administration to look into a rental assistance relief program. Staff was then given a couple of days to come up with a proposal, which we did at the end of last week, and that is the item here before you. The agenda bill indicates that the city council directed that, but I wanted to make sure that it was clear that this came from a discussion, not of any one member of the council, but really came from a discussion of the leadership team that met last week. Question number two is, how does this program relate to state and county funds, similar areas that may come up? Is it additive? And would it be replaced by those programs if they are created? We checked to see if there are any existing programs that have been newly created or existing that would reimburse for this, and we've not been able to identify any of those such programs. So as we are presenting this program to you tonight, we are assuming that this $100,000 is Issaquah, city of Issaquah money that will not be reimbursed by another level of government. If such opportunities would be available, we would seek reimbursement. Question three dealt with the term of the program. There was a question if the term could be shorter, and yes, the length of the time of the program is flexible per council direction. Question number four, how will the funds be allocated among the three organizations? As we had indicated, we would like some flexibility. If the council would prefer that there be a specific allocation, we would recommend that it would be $40,000 for the Issaquah Community Services, $40,000 for St. Vincent de Paul, and $20,000 for Hope Link. As the information we provided earlier, both Issaquah Community Services and St. Vincent de Paul, I think have a longer track record here, so we figured that there would be a greater need for those two organizations versus Hope Link. But again, our recommendation remains that there be flexibility provided to the mayor for the allocation of those dollars to those organizations, not to exceed the $100,000. Question five, can the program be clarified to more clearly state this is an emergency temporary response to COVID-19, focusing on assisting Issaquah residents with the greatest need? Certainly, if this is approved, our messaging of the program would clearly state that. Question six, this is probably the question that has been of most interest to members of the council, and that is the median income requirement. Staff is originally proposing 120%, and the question was, could this be at a different income level? And so what this document shows is what the median income is at various levels. There's been interest, I think, at the 80% level, which is $61,800 for a one-person household, or $88,250 for a four-person household, 100% of AMI is $76,000, $20 per one, and $108,600 for a four-person, 110 is $83,622 per a one-person household, and $119,460. So again, the council has flexibility of setting the AMI at whatever you think is appropriate. Question number seven, how do we determine AMI if someone has lost their job or work hours? During screening, the applicants need to provide income and employment status in the last 30 days so they can account for recent changes in their fiscal situation, job or wage loss, et cetera. A person becomes eligible automatically in this case as long as their income under normal circumstances would be below the AMI levels imposed. Question eight, can we stipulate that 100% of funds go only to Issaquah residents? And the answer is yes, that that's already a part of all of our existing contracts, and we are proposing that this program would only pay for Issaquah residents, not the residents of any other jurisdiction. Question nine, could the council require a reporting update when 50% of funds have been expended? Can reporting be expanded to include deployment status? And date when deployment status changed? And the answer is yes, that we're recommending monthly reporting, and reporting can contain whatever factors the city council requests. Question 10, do we have a sense of the rent-mortgage breakdown of funding that these organizations provide? And in working with the three organizations, we have learned that they have not previously provided mortgage assistance. The ICS and St. Vincent de Paul have the capacity to provide mortgage assistance. No requests have been made in 2019, and that the Issaquah Community Services reported less than three requests made in 2019. Hope Link had not provided any mortgage assistance. As far as rental assistance, in 2019, Issaquah's Community Services served 218 households in Issaquah. in Issaquah, St. Vincent de Paul, St. Joseph, Issaquah Conference, 122 Issaquah households, and Hope Link 36 households. Question 11, in the current situation, including the state of emergency, is it possible to prioritize or specifically allocate support funding to specific groups, first responders, medical professionals, et cetera? Could we allocate to those specifically impacted by COVID-19 under usual circumstances? This is for, under usual circumstances, rather, this is prohibited by housing fairness laws, but this is an option to address specific circumstances. Staff conferred with city attorney Jim Haney, and Mr. Haney let us know, as is detailed here, the Federal for Housing Act prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, or financing of housing based on race, color, religion, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, familial status, or disability. The city has no authority, under emergency circumstances or otherwise, to violate the Fair Housing Act or to suspend its application to any particular action. However, the city attorney believes it should be possible to prioritize the use of funds for persons impacted by COVID-19, in event the virus attacks all the protected classes equally. In his opinion, therefore, unlikely that assisting those impacted by COVID-19 would run afoul of fair housing laws. As for prioritizing funding for those particular groups, such as first responders, medical professionals, et cetera, the question is whether this would have a discriminatory effect. For example, could one argue that people with disabilities are probably not included in the category of first responders in proportion to their presence of the general population, and that this may have a discriminatory effect on the disabled by including them from this program? There may be other arguments that can be made for or against discriminatory effect. The council should be cautious in any priorities it sets, and should consider whether any of those priorities would have a discriminatory effect on any one of the protected classes. Number 12, how does this program compare to other programs like utility assistance or grocery vouchers, and is the city going to be considering those? Again, the answer, Mayor Polly, council leadership believe that providing direct assistance for shelter was an appropriate first step. There are many other options for providing assistance to Issaquah residents, and at this time, the administration is not proposing other programs until we have a better idea of the city's current and median financial position. And then finally, question number 13, could we work with ARCH to assure that their own units don't go into foreclosure and cause the loss of properties to the program? With that in mind, could we shift any of these funds toward those residents? The answer, ARCH currently monitors for foreclosure and loss of properties, and staff can work with ARCH to continue to monitor units. These proposed funds could be shifted for that purpose. The administration would suggest we monitor the situation and report back to the city council if additional funds are needed. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we believe this is an important program, but clearly a first step to provide relief to our residents. Number of staff and representatives from these organizations are also on the call this evening, and we're all ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. That concludes your presentation. I do have a few folks up here that are ready with questions, but I first wanted to thank the council for beginning your review early on and sending in so many questions that could be read into the record. For those that might be watching on YouTube, not have a package accessible, I think, I think city administrator did a good job. So we'll start with Goodman, Councilmember Goodman, question? And I'll just check in with the city clerk. Can you tell if Councilmember Goodman is still on the call?
I am still on the call. I forgot to unmute my mic. Sorry.
Fantastic. Okay, your question?
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. I would like to know some, get some more information, and maybe the thoughts behind mortgage assistance. I believe I heard in Wally's presentation that the, at least two of the three providers have not provided mortgage assistance before, and given that the banks are starting to already put out information about helping folks with mortgages, I would like to know what the thought is behind that and why we would include mortgages and not just rents when other, it appears as though other opportunities are available for folks who are impacted by COVID-19 that may have an issue with their mortgage payments coming up pretty soon.
Administrator Bob Kowits?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman. I think as we were working on this, the thought was to make the program be available to as many Issaquah residents as possible, and through those discussions, mortgage assistance came up in addition to rent. I agree with you, Councilmember Goodman, that there are different programs available for homeowners, which may be different than rental, but our idea here was to provide the city council with the broadest program for it to consider.
Was there any, is there, has there been any survey or information gathering about assistance from banks? I know Bank of America has been out there, and I'd imagine that other banks. I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, I'm not convinced that mortgage assistance is the way to go, along with rentals, rents right now, and so I'm just trying to get a sense of what we know.
City Administrator?
Yes, I think I've shared all that we know. We have not done any kind of large canvas of what is out there in the few days that we've been working on this. Again, the direction, the discussion that came as we were putting this together was to develop a program that had the widest reach as possible.
Okay, thanks. Next question, Council President Hunt?
Council President Hunt here. I have a question, which I think is for the providers, and my question is, would it be possible to collect information about the connection of the, of the people that are receiving the funding, the connection to COVID-19? And so the purpose of this information would be for the city and the city council to better understand what are the, what are the financial impacts that are leading to the need for this funding, and I'm wondering if you could, if you can, if you can actually collect that kind of information.
That's great. I'm not sure if the guest presenters can actually see in the comment box who would like to answer, but I will, I will go down through the list and give you each an opportunity to answer. Lucy, would you unmute and speak for Hope Link?
Yes, so thank you all for having us and for your quick work on all of this. For Hope Link, we do, as part of our screening process, try to capture the financial need of the clients, and previously, our assistance was based on the households going through a financial shock, and our, our current qualifications for shock are COVID-19 as the primary shock, and, and we're trying to capture whether that means reduced hours, complete loss of employment, childcare costs, and a number of factors to categorize. So we'll be collecting ongoing as we go.
Thank you, Lucy. Could I get Lori or Elaine from Issaquah Community Services to unmute?
Yes, this is Lori from Issaquah Community Services, and yes, we have already started asking during our phone interviews, what is the reason for their call? So we are specially marking what they're, for the COVID-19. So yes, it's very possible to collect that information.
Thank you. Carol and Jim, Carol or Jim from St. Vincent de Paul, could you unmute and provide an answer?
Yes, good evening. Jim Hollis here. Currently, we, when our neighbors come to us, our clients come to us, we screen for financial shock, as was articulated earlier, and it's usually things like, you know, losing a job, disability, workplace injury, that sort of thing. We, we record that information in our database as to what's driving it. So certainly identifying COVID-19-driven shocks is something we can, we can do. Our database isn't set up for us to sort on that, on that field, so the reporting to the city will be a little more onerous, time-consuming, but it's, it's doable.
Thank you. Council President Hunt, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Great. Next, I'm seeing a question from Councilmember De Michelle.
Thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. I'm wondering if you could walk through the process of how we arrived at the figure of $100,000, and where I'm going with this is, is $100,000 going to be enough? I'm looking at the numbers of 218 and 122 last year, and 36, and thinking that $100,000 isn't going to go very far, but if, let's start with, how did you originally arrive at that number, and then do you think this is going to be adequate? Thank you.
Thanks. City Administrator Bob Kowits?
Since we're about a week and a half or two weeks into this, you know, the selection of the $100,000 was a best guesstimate of a significant amount of money that we could put into the community, but also recognizing that we don't know the fiscal impacts that COVID-19 is going to mean to the city government or the city of Issaquah. We don't know if this is sufficient or not sufficient, but it felt like the right amount to get started, to make at least some sort of meaningful impact right away.
Can I ask a follow-up, Dan?
Sure, Councilmember De Michelle.
So we've talked about this before, and I, I, so I just want to be clear that if it looks like we need additional funds to meet what, I have a feeling it's going to be an overwhelming number of applicants, we will be able to revisit this. Am I correct in that?
Administrator Bob Kowits?
Yes, we will absolutely be able to revisit this in the future. I think, you know, talking with members of the council, there's interest in doing other types of programs. Again, my recommendation to the mayor and the city council is that we get a better sense of our fiscal position before we would take on any other initiatives.
And I agree with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next question is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. Playing off of Councilmember De Michelle's question, if we, as I would likely anticipate, have more applicants than the funding would allow, which if I calculate, if somebody uses the maximum three months at $500 each, that would be about 66 people. The shorter, if they only go for one month, that would be about 200 people. So if you've got more applicants than you have funding, how do the providers choose or prioritize who gets funded? Is it a first come, first served, most need, hasn't been served before? How are those decisions made?
So thank you for that question. This is Mary, the mayor. Let's start with Lori or Elaine from Issaquah Community Services, if you could unmute and answer.
Hey, this is Lori, and the answer is first come, first served. So if they, if we expand, expand all of our funds, then we'll be coming and asking for more.
Thank you. Can I get Jim to unmute and provide an answer for St. Vincent de Paul?
Certainly. First come, first served for us, but as we get down to like a week's worth of funding, we're a little tighter, and we call amongst the volunteers and may, may do some, some prioritization there, but it's 90% first come, first served.
Thank you. And Lucy with Hope Link?
Ours is first come, first served. We're going to be opening up additional days as we look at our funding rolling. Right now, we have one day a month that, for people to apply, and it's first come, first served on that day, but we're going to be opening up on a rolling basis as we, as we analyze the need.
Thank you. That was Councilmember Walsh's question. Did you get sufficient information?
Yes, the only additional point I would, or question I would make is if we do approve this, and knowing that it is first come, first served, can we be able to notify the community ahead of that applicant period so that people have an equal opportunity to apply for that?
City Administrator Bob Kowits?
Yes, our, our plan at this point is to make sure that if the council approves this this evening, that we would start communicating the availability of the funds immediately.
Thank you. Councilmember Walsh, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. City Administrator Bob Kowits, just wanted you to clarify whether or not you, if there's any information out there at the state level or the federal level right now about where additional rental aid might come from?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we did a scan at the end of last week, and we're not able to identify anything, and I'm unaware of anything that has occurred today.
Okay, thank you. I have a question next up from Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mart. My question is, why are we, why was the recommendation 120%? Why is 80% potential alternate? I would imagine that the lower the number we use, the, well, actually, I don't know. Why, why 120%? Thanks.
Oh, sorry. City Administrator Bob Kowits?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mart. As we were putting this together, the direction that we received was to create as broad a program as possible, and so we chose the, the high number of the AMI in order to have the maximum number of residents participate. Clearly, this is a policy decision. We provided the information to you in the questions and answers of where other percentages rank with annual income, and it's a policy decision. Again, we're dealing with a relatively short period of time. We wanted to give you the broadest program possible, and if the council felt it was appropriate to, to tweak, then we wanted to give you that ability. But it did not come from the providers? That is correct. It did not come from the providers. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. Next, I have Councilmember Ray.
I want to just start off with a comment and thank everybody on staff and Wally for turning this agenda bill around so quickly. It was kind of an amazing piece of work. With that, just a couple of questions, and this is going to build a little bit on Councilmember Mart's comment. What are the current AMI requirements for our providers that are joining us in this enterprise currently? Do they have them? Do you have them?
So thank you for that question. I'll again go through the different lists of our providers. Jim from St. Vincent de Paul, do you have some information for Councilmember Ray?
Certainly. Jim, we currently don't have an AMI threshold, but if you were to ask me, I'd say we don't have anyone who's, who approaches 100% of AMI. They're probably in the 70, 80% range from what I've seen.
Thank you, Jim. Lucy from Hope Link, could you unmute and provide?
Yes, our financial assistance currently is 200% of the federal poverty level or 50% AMI, and as you get higher in the number of members per household, the threshold shifts from 200% qualifying to 50% qualifying. So to keep it as open as possible, that's our current policy.
Thank you very much. And Lori with Issaquah Community Services?
Yes, this is Lori. We currently do not have an AMI level. However, we too operate at pretty much below the 80% AMI level.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray, does that answer your question, and do you have another?
That was outstanding. Thank you very much for that. But I do have another question, and it deals with kind of another part of the But I do have another question, and it deals with kind of another part of the agenda bill, where we talk about the eligibility for up to three months of $500 over a 12-month period. I'm curious, I mean, I saw your response that we could set that threshold, whatever we wanted to, but I am curious why we picked a 12-month threshold? Are we thinking this is a 12-month problem? Or what was the rationale there?
City Administrator Bobkowitz?
And I'd like to phone a friend, Monica McGilla, who is our, from our Recreation Community Services Department. Monica, could you talk a little bit about that? I believe it came from looking at what our existing program is, is that correct?
Yes, yes, thank you so much. This is Monica McGilla, Human Services. So yes, we were trying to create a program that matches as much as possible the existing programs in place, and the organizations currently have the possibility of helping residents twice per year or once per year due to limited funding. They don't have the capacity to help residents multiple times, so we just put that threshold of 12 months. So basically, knowing that our funds were limited also, we said that they could help residents up to three months within a 12-month period. So the expectation was not necessarily that the program will last 12 months, but just to put limit that residents would be eligible for it for about three months. Does that help a little bit?
Yeah, and thanks for, thank you, Monica, for the answer. It just sends a mixed message, is it a three-month program or is it a 12-month program? But thank you for that clarification.
Councilmember Ray, did you have an additional question?
That's all I have for right now, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to check in with Councilmember Hall, because we have actually worked our way through most of the council and just asked you to come off mute and let us know if you have any questions.
I don't, thank you very much for checking in with me, though. I've crossed out all my questions because people keep asking them before me.
That's awesome, they are asking some great questions. I would like to, if there are no more questions at this point in time, thanks to City Administrator Monica for the presentation. I would like to check in with Council President Hunt.
I just said I had another question, Mary Lynn.
Oh, sorry, that didn't come up yet.
That's okay.
Go ahead. Councilmember Goodman, your question.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. So, I started off with a question about mortgage assistance, and I heard from Council Administrator Bobkowitz, and so I was wondering if I could hear from the providers about the, what we heard during the presentation was that, I believe there were at least a couple who haven't provided or don't provide mortgage assistance or haven't provided mortgage assistance. So, I'm going to come and hear from the providers about what their thoughts are about including mortgage assistance in, with this money.
Thank you. I will work through the list again, and if we can have Lucy with HopeLink unmute and provide some information.
Yeah, so we currently do not provide mortgage assistance. A lot of that was rooted at one point in federal funding did not allow direct assistance to go towards assets, and so depending on what funding source agencies had, it could not go towards mortgage payments or car payments, for example. At HopeLink, we made a workaround by raising our own funds and applying them to financial assistance for our flexible financial assistance programs, but we have not had mortgage payments at this time. I will say from previous agencies that I've worked at providing rental assistance in other states, that the documentation process and pledge process with mortgage servicers is much more complicated from a service standpoint, and also typically you also want to connect a person who's at risk with mortgages to different service providers. HUD-approved housing counselors are really the best resource for that time, and that is a certification process, and they work with the clients to work with their servicers. And so it's kind of a both divide and conquer mentality of, let's get them to the programs that will be most efficient and most knowledgeable to support them, and also knowing with various funders the restrictions on asset payments and, and the difficulties on the service end with payments to service providers. So that's, that's where we are. We're not ruling it out with our flexible financial assistance, but that's been the case thus long.
Thank you, Lori, Lucy. Can I get Lori to come off mute from Issaquah Community Services, same question?
Yes, this is Lori. We very rarely get a phone call for mortgage assistance, but we did have three in total all of last year, and I think even less the year before. It's just very rare that a client comes and asks for mortgage assistance. We handle them exactly like our clients for rent assistance. We work with the banker and, and the client, and we just do the same thing. We find out what their late payment is, how much they owe, and then we work with the client to understand, you know, their circumstances. Then we approve it and we send our check directly to the bank.
Thank you. And can I get Jim from St. Vincent de Paul to come off mute and answer the question?
Certainly. So, very similar to ICS, very rarely do we get requests, but on a case-by-case basis we may approve them. I've been doing this for about, I've covered three fiscal years. I've seen four instances of mortgage payments to the tune of about $1,000, maybe $1,200 out of roughly $180,000 over those three years, $190,000. So it's a, we do, but it's a very small percentage of our, of our annual expenditures.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, are you satisfied or do you need more information?
I am, thank you very much for all of your responses, I appreciate the information.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. I have another question from Councilmember Ray.
Hi, Councilmember Ray here. This is a question for our partners again, feel like we're picking on you guys. With the responsibility for managing the distribution of these emergency funds, is it reasonable for us to expect that you'd have some overhead associated with the managing of the additions to your grant? I guess I'm open to thinking that all of this won't, and probably shouldn't go to direct service, that there should be some reckon, realization that you all have overheads, that you have to cover to deliver these services for us? Thoughts?
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. Could we have Jim from St. Vincent de Paul first?
Yeah, Jim here. So, yeah, huge overhead burden, we'll have to buy a few more stamps and a couple envelopes.
Okay, we can cover that.
And let's get Lori from Issaquah Community Services.
Yes, Lori here. We're the same as Jim, we're 100% volunteer, and we, the only expenses we would have would be the envelopes and stamps.
So we'll go to Lucy, and I'm thinking we're probably going to get the same answer.
Yeah, we are, we are budgeted for our staffing, we're putting in lots of extra time and elbow grease, but we want, we want all of these funds to go towards direct assistance.
Great, thank you all for that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. At this point in time, I am not seeing any other questions showing up on the monitor. That doesn't mean there won't be some additional questions, but I'm going to move to inviting Council President Hunt to provide any feedback on what public comments or public information might have been submitted to council this week for consideration on this item. Council President Hunt?
Yes, thank you. This is Council President Hunt. So first, I wanted to make it clear that these are not my comments, these are a summary of comments that we've received as the city council by email, and I'm going to do my best to summarize them without reading the whole email and identify who sent us the messages. And this is because right now we are strongly encouraging community members that have comments to email us, and we are not accepting public comments because of the COVID-19 public health recommendations. So the first comment that we received on this agenda item is from Steve Pereira, and he, he commented that he liked the compassionate response to need, and he liked that we used a recommended list of service providers with local knowledge and, and local connections. He thought it should be restricted to Issaquah residents and would limit the eligibility to 80% AMI, and he had questions about how far into the crisis we are and questions about how we are doing long-term planning for need. We also received an email from Elizabeth Monpan. She wrote to us as a former member of the Human Services Commission, and she wrote about the ongoing need for affordable housing, and the, she also wrote about, she also suggested starting with 80% of AMI and below. And she wrote, and I will read one quote just so it's correctly in the record, she wrote, "Those landlords who are fortunate enough to be in the average or above-average AMI need to share some of the responsibility for this crisis. If rents are not reduced, we will see a huge surge in homelessness as soon as evictions are allowed for non-payment of rent," end quote. She also said that this sort of assistance will ease the pinch for a moment, but does not address the root of the inequities. And then lastly, we received a letter from Wright Noel, an attorney of Carson Noel, and he wrote to us as the incoming chair of the Chamber of Commerce. His email was not specific to this agenda bill, but it was more broadly about the response of the city to COVID-19. He expressed concerns for businesses and for the city to support businesses and business recovery. And then, most relevant to this agenda bill, he did provide the following thoughts on landlords. He said, "Many landlords have mortgages to pay and expenses associated with owning a rental that they have to pay. They are a business just like a local rental, a local retail store, and shifting, shifting the burden to landlords puts them in a place where they will be defaulting on loans, et cetera." So he said, "We should weigh carefully doing anything that will shift financial burden to landlords." And that concludes the public comments that we received relevant to this item.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. And as you said, those were received by all council via email this week. Before, the next part of, if there are no follow-up questions, and I'm not seeing any right now on the list, the next option would be for someone on council to make a motion. Based on the conversation I have heard and the questions that you've asked, it seems that there are some policy issues that you may want to consider after. You have put a motion on the table, there is a discussion of rent versus mortgage, level of affordability, a question about a three-month window of payments within a 12-month period, and also I know there was some questions asked earlier today about additional reporting requirements. So what I would like you to do is after the main motion is on the table, if you can indicate to me in the comment bar, if you would like to make an amendment to the motion, we'll follow through those in order as they are received. So first, would somebody be prepared to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion, this is Council President Hunt.
Great, and I'm looking for a second.
Good. Chris Ray, I will second that.
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Ray. So it has been moved and seconded, and there is a motion on the table to, sorry?
Sorry, do you want me to read the motion?
Sure, that would be great. Okay.
Okay. I would, I move to establish the Issaquah Rental and Mortgage Emergency Assistance Program and authorize funding of $100,000 for those affected by the COVID-19 crisis as outlined in AB 7948, and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute contract amendments with Issaquah Community Services, St. Vincent de Paul, St. Joseph Conference, Issaquah, and HopeLink to provide these emergency funds, and authorize the finance director to include $100,000 from the general fund in a subsequent 2020 budget amendment.
Thank you, Council President. Is there a second?
Second, this is Chris Ray.
Thank you, Councilmember Ray. I have Councilmember Goodman wishing to make an amendment. Councilmember Goodman?
Councilmember Goodman here, thank you. I would like to make an amendment, and the proposed amendment is that it's limited to rental assistance, not mortgage assistance at this time.
Is there a second?
This is Council President Hunt, I will second.
Thank you. For discussion, we will start off with the motion maker. Councilmember Goodman, would you like to speak to the motion?
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. So, I made the motion to amend for a couple of reasons. One is that for folks who own a home, as we heard from the service provider, that's considered an asset, it's a fairly significant asset, and there certainly are more resources for most people who own homes who may find themselves in some financially challenging times, such as they'll have equity in a home, they might have an ongoing line of credit or equity line of credit, but they could also get help from their lender. I'm, I'm quite sure that the lenders are going to be stepping up here to help. The last thing that they want right now is a flood of floor closures, which would take several months to get to that position anyway where they would be foreclosing. But I think there are a lot of options and programs that are available for, for folks who have mortgages, and I really think that those should be exhausted first. As indicated, people with homes generally tend to have more assets. The city, I think, needs to be concerned about its own financial health as well at this point. We're at the beginning, really the beginning of this, and so I think we should probably move, I don't, I don't want to say slowly, I just think we need to move prudently and be careful about what resources, particularly cash, we, we put out there right now. Certainly rental assistance makes sense, I'm not sure at this point that, that mortgage assistance makes sense. We can always revisit. We also heard from the service providers that it's extremely rare for folks to need mortgage assistance. So, could there be more than that in a normal last three or four years when we've had a really, really good economy? Certainly. But I think the vast majority of people who are going to be calling the provider, service providers, are going to need rental assistance. So that's the reason that I made the motion.
Thank you. I am going to go to Council President Hunt for a comment, and I would like council members who would wish to comment on this amendment to send me a message so I can put you in a queue. Thanks. Council President Hunt?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. I, I will support this. I think we are trying right now to find a balance between acting quickly and also addressing a need that we don't yet know the full scope of, and so I think, I think making these sorts of adjustments and then revisiting this rental and assistance programs like this, I think it will be an ongoing process, but I'm supportive of this amendment.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ray?
Hi, this is Councilmember Ray. I also support this amendment. I continue to be very supportive of the idea of providing support, but I also think we need to temper that with the fact that we have all sorts of financial obligations and challenges on the future, in the future and on the horizon. So this will take care of the most important need, and when this agenda bill was first contemplated, we were cashing in or taking advantage of the fact that we as a city can move very quickly and very nimbly to get something out early in the program while we waited for other sources to come through. So this really focuses on us meeting those with the greatest needs and doing it in the most expeditious manner possible.
Thank you. I am going to check with council members who have not commented, and if you are not going to comment, that is fine, you can just specify by saying no comment. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, yeah, this is Zach Hall. I'll be supporting this amendment, I was convinced by Councilmember Goodman and the others who spoke in favor of it. I agree that, I really probably wouldn't be I agree that I really probably wouldn't be supporting this if lenders weren't in a position where supporting their borrowers would be good for business, which I agree that they are in that position. And thankfully, the Department of Financial Institutions for our state issued new guidance to lenders as well to provide relief for mortgage borrowers. So I see a path here that doesn't exist for renters, and that presents the city of Issaquah us with an opportunity to fill in the gaps. So yeah, I'll be supporting this amendment.
Thank you. I have seen through Messenger that Councilmembers Mart, Walsh, and De Michele have no comment. If there is no additional comment, I'll call for the vote on the amendment, which is to limit the program to rental. All those in favor of limiting the assistance program to rental? Oh, this is awkward. I guess we're doing a roll call vote. Here we go. We'll do a roll call vote. Mayor Polly, this is Tisha. I'm happy to do the roll call vote. Tisha, thank you very much. All right, so I'll read your name and please respond with aye or nay. Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. Thank you, Tina. I understand that Council President Hunt has an amendment to propose. Council President Hunt?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. I move to amend the program's eligibility criteria to the residents of Issaquah meeting income requirements at or below 80% of the area median income who need temporary financial assistance resulting from financial hardship due to the COVID-19 crisis.
Thank you. I'll be looking for a second. And if you can do it by message, then I will call your name, and we'll do it on audio. Councilmember Goodman?
Councilmember Goodman here, I second the motion.
Thank you. Council President Hunt, would you like to speak to the motion?
Yes, thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I made this motion somewhat along the same lines as the amendment that Councilmember Goodman made. I think that we need to be very careful about the use of funds. We're at the very beginning of addressing this COVID-19 crisis, and we don't yet know the extent of what will be needed. And I think that making the eligibility for those that are most vulnerable right now and most needed of assistance makes sense. This is the first effort like this that we're doing. We can adjust with time. I also am going to be making a motion about reporting, and I think we'll learn a lot as we proceed with this. But for now, I think it's important that we restrict the funding so that it goes further and that it addresses the most dire need. And then also, the other part of this is that it adds the wording about financial hardship due to the COVID-19 crisis because I think in keeping with the intent of this emergency assistance, we should specify that that's really what this is for.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, would you like to comment?
The only comment I have is I support changing the AMI to 80%. Thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember De Michele, do you have a comment?
I do not. I support the amendment.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Ray?
I think...
Councilmember Ray?
I think this, oh, this is Chris Ray. I think this amendment makes a lot of sense. We're trying to do the most good for the people with the greatest need. And I think by focusing below 80% AMI, it really helps us to focus on those with the greatest need. Also, in listening to our partners, this is a population that they're currently serving, so it makes it easier for them to have a consistent set of eligibility standards for all of the support that they're giving. I think this makes a lot of sense.
Thank you very much. I have Councilmember Mart, Walsh, and Hall not commenting at this time. So if there is no additional discussion, we'll do a roll call vote on this amendment, which is to limit the income requirement to at or below 80%. Tina? Councilmember De Michele? Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. Oh, thank you, Tisha. The amendment passes. I understand Council President Hunt has another proposed amendment?
Yes, hello, this is Council President Hunt. I move that we add the following reporting requirements to the program. The city council will receive a report summarizing invoices received once 50% of the funding has been distributed. This report will provide the metrics identified in the Contract Requirements section of AB 7948, as well as information about the ways the funding needs were connected with the COVID-19 crisis.
Is there a second? Just to the top here. Okay, Councilmember Goodman has seconded. Council President Hunt, would you like to speak to the motion?
Excuse me, can we have the second on the speaker, please?
On audio? Sure. Councilmember Goodman, on audio?
Yes, this is Councilmember Goodman here, I second the motion. Thank you very much.
Council President Hunt?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. This motion, I, the intent of this motion is that council would receive and the city would receive more information about the rate at which this money is being spent. As I spoke earlier, we are at the beginning of addressing this crisis, and we don't know how fast this funding will be used. We don't yet know the extent of need. So the intent of this motion is to get some information about that and also to get some information about how the financial hardship being experienced in the community is connected with the COVID-19 crisis so that we can better address those needs going forward. And I appreciate hearing from the providers about how they are already collecting information that will help us, help us better understand the crisis. And so I think that that is very important for us to receive that information.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmember Hall, would you like to comment?
Thank you. Yes, this is Zach Hall, I'm very supportive. One of the difficult parts about this agenda bill was operating without really having a whole lot of information about the need that's out there in the Issaquah community because we want to be quick and we want to make sure that we're covering people who need it right away and as they're facing crisis. So I see this, these reporting requirements help us identify that need. You know, it helps us paint a data story about whether or not we need to allocate further assistance down the line or even how we can help tell this story to the state and federal government as we, we as a city ask for assistance in supporting our residents. So I think that there are a lot of different ways why this amendment makes sense, and I'm very much supporting it.
Thank you very much. I am seeing that Councilmember Walsh has no comment, and I'm not seeing any other council members who are wishing to make a comment at this time. The amendment to the motion is to include additional reporting requirements. All those in favor, oh, sorry, Tisha, can we take a roll call? Yes. Councilmember De Michele? Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt, sorry, Hunt.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. Thank you very much, Tisha. Are there any other amendments to the motion? I'll give you a few seconds to think it over. During that time, I have a question for our city clerks. The motion that I have before me has had several approved amendments, and I would like to try out a draft of a new motion, if that is appropriate, adding in with income requirements at or below 80% and with additional reporting requirements as amended. Is that an appropriate thing to do?
Mayor Polly, this is Tisha. My recommendation would be to, when you read the motion again, to remove the reference to "ant mortgage" in the program name. And then in the end, identify as outlined in AB 7948, "ant as amended." And I think that would be sufficient.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Not seeing anybody weighing in with additional amendments. The motion before council is to establish the Issaquah Rental Emergency Assistance Program and authorize spending of $100,000 for those affected by the COVID-19 crisis as outlined in AB 7948 and as amended. Oh, Tisha, would you roll call vote, please? Yes, and just to clarify the items two and three as part of the motion, Mayor? Oh, yes. And also to authorize the mayor to enter into and execute contract amendments with Issaquah Community Services, St. Vincent de Paul, St. Joseph Conference, Issaquah, and Hope Link to provide these emergency funds and to authorize the finance director to include $100,000 from the general fund in a subsequent 2020 budget amendment. And it has been, oh, a 2020 budget amendment. Thank you, Tisha. Yes. Councilmember De Michele?
Mayor, sorry, this is Council President Hunt. Yes, I'm sorry. Mayor Polly, would you entertain comments on the general motion before we take the vote?
I think that's fine if you don't think it reflects the council's intent. Council President Hunt?
No, so I just seen that there are several people wishing to comment in the chat box.
Ah, and here I am with my head down reading. Okay. Hang on one second. Thanks. Yes, so we do have council members who would like to talk before the vote, and we'll start with Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am very proud to be supporting this bill this evening. I think the timing couldn't have been more critical. I think that as we, as the decisions at the state level have occurred this evening, they're necessary and prudent, but will create quite a bit of hardship and challenge in our community. As we, as we do, it has to be done to fight this disease. And so I'm glad that we are able to partner with organizations in the community that know our community so well and to provide a measure of support and sustenance to folks in need in our community. I believe there will be other opportunities going forward, both monetary and organizationally, to try to ease this burden in our community, which I consider to be sort of the highest calling that I've had in ten and a half years on council. So a big thumbs up for this and a thank you to the staff for putting this together and putting together the community support that allowed us to get additional information and craft a better bill this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I am supporting this because I think it's a fantastic way for us to be as responsive and quickly address some of the needs that we are obviously seeing on the immediate realm. I am concerned that this is going to be a drop in the bucket. I'm also concerned that we as a city need to make sure that our financial house is in order. So I appreciate that we have started small until we understand what that picture is. But gosh, I really hope we can make as big of a difference as we can as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember De Michele?
Hi, this is Barbara De Michele. I just want to thank our partners so much, Hope Link and Issaquah Community Services and St. Vincent de Paul. I think this situation illustrates how important it is for a community to have a vibrant nonprofit and human service infrastructure. The fact that we were able to put this program together in response to this crisis so quickly and with the help of city staff and also many thanks to city council leadership for bringing this forward. And so I can't thank everybody enough. But again, I think, I think just to point it out that if we didn't have these organizations employed in Issaquah, we wouldn't be able to do this. They are there, and we are able to access them, and I think it's a really important lesson for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray?
I want to amplify what Councilmember De Michele said, and that is, we couldn't do this without the excellent work of ICS, St. Vincent de Paul, and Hope Link. And wanted to thank them for not only coming together with us on this one, but also all the other services that they provide to our community year in and year out. The second comment I want to make is this, as Councilmember Walsh pointed out, is a drop in a bucket that is going to be quite large. And we need to figure out and start partnering with state, county, and federal agencies to ensure that we have a safety net program in place because we don't have the resources to do everything that needs to be done. And we're going to have to rely on our other partners at the federal, state, and county level to help us deliver here, as well as leaning on our great non-for-profit service providers who I know are going to be there for us.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. I'm not seeing any other comments this time. Thank you, Council President Hunt, for noticing that I had my head down reading at the time and missed it. I believe we'll go for the roll call vote now. On the main motion, Councilmember De Michele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Thank you, Tisha, that passes unanimously. Thank you to staff, thank you to service providers for being with us this evening, and for council for all your great questions. We're going to be moving on to the next item on our agenda this evening, item D, temporary suspension of pass-through carryout bag charge. And the ask before you this evening is to adopt the ordinance. Again, I'd like to ask for the administrator, Bob Kowets, to introduce this item. And if council members can please fold your questions until the end of the presentation, that would be appreciated. Thank you. Who didn't...
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Chapter 8.05 of the Issaquah Municipal Code prohibits the use of disposable plastic carryout chopping bags in the city and requires retail establishments to collect a pass-through charge of not less than five cents for each recyclable paper carryout bag provided to customers. In light of the proclamation of the emergency that the mayor made on March 6, we were notified by stores as well as the Greater Issaquah Chamber of Commerce that grocers and retailers had suspended the use of custom-provided reusable bags in order to prevent contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus. The impact of this to the customers required to pay the city's pass-through charge for recycled paper carryout bags. In reviewing the ordinance as well as discussion with the mayor's staff, proposed to the mayor that she issue a proclamation of suspending the charge of the fee which was done last week. In reviewing this with the city attorney, he also recommended that the council consider the ordinance before you to suspend the collection of the fee for the duration of the civil emergency that was declared on March 6. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have the ordinance... we have the ordinance before you. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council members? I'll give you a few seconds to chime in. I am not seeing any. Is there a motion? Could somebody indicate to me that they would like to make a motion so I can recognize you audibly? Uh, Council President Hunt?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. I move to, oh, I move to adopt ordinance number 2904, suspending the pass-through charge on recycled paper carryout bags imposed under IMC 8.05 for the duration of the emergency proclaimed by the mayor, ratifying and approving the mayor's actions in suspending the charge retroactive to March 19, 2020, declaring an emergency, and providing for an immediate effective date.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
This is Chris Ray. I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. I know that there is at least one potential amendment. Councilmember De Michelle?
Hello. I would like to offer an amendment to the ordinance, Section 3, duration of suspension. I would like to add the wording at the end of the paragraph. And would you, would you like me to read the entire paragraph?
That may be helpful for viewers who don't have the packet open.
The paragraph reads, "The suspension provided for in this ordinance shall remain in effect for the duration of the civil emergency proclaimed by Mayor Polly on March 6, 2020, and shall terminate upon the termination of that emergency proclamation." And I would like to amend that to add, "Or the second council meeting on January 18, 2022, whichever comes first." End of amendment.
Is there a second? Council, Councilmember Marks?
I would like to second. This is Councilmember Marks.
They've been seconded. Councilmember De Michelle, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Well, let's see. Just want to make sure I'm unmuted here. So from my point of view, Isqwa's promotion of reusable bags along with attempts to eliminate the use of plastic bags and reduce the use of paper bags was a really important measure for many residents in Isqwa. I know it's part of the discussion, and I remember that the ordinance took a long time to negotiate into its final form, and it took time for residents to, and grocers, to accept the ordinance. So while it is completely understandable that we are suspending the five cent charge on paper bags while we're operating under emergency proclamation and national health directives, I think our community would want us to ensure that the council will revisit the suspension should the state of emergency endure for an extended period. I can think of many good reasons why the city would maintain a state of emergency even after most businesses and agencies have returned to normal operations. The economic, social, and operational impacts of the COVID-19 crisis will continue for many months, if not years. And so my worry is that this suspension could mean the loss of our community's momentum on an important environmental initiative. By making this amendment motion, I, or by suggesting this amendment, I, I was trying to not get in the way of the emergency proclamation, but instead provided time for the council to review and consider this if the emergency proclamation is extended for a long period of time, just to make sure that the council has a chance to either review it again, terminate the suspension, we could choose to continue the suspension, or review the program in its entirety, which was an option offered by one of our female correspondents. The date of January 18, 2022 is the date of the second council meeting in January after the next election, and that's why I chose that date. And so that was my rationale for proposing this amendment.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. We have a question from Councilmember Goodman. So maybe this is a dumb question, but the civil emergency doesn't have a termination date, correct? It's, how does that? What's the procedure for ending a civil emergency? City Administrator Bob Kowetz?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, the, the mayor would make a similar proclamation determining that the emergency has passed.
Okay, so right now we are just under a civil emergency. There's no end date for obvious reasons. That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Question member from Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. I noticed that one of the points in the, in discussing the alternatives, if we don't adopt, the Isqwa shoppers will continue to bear the cost burden of the carryout bag fee as long as reusable shopping bags are prohibited. And I wanted to get into that idea of reusable shopping bags being prohibited. First of all, is there any? I, I don't understand how, whether it comes along with the civil emergency, how a company would have the ability to ban reusable, prohibit them in their, in their location. And it also seems that this fee is not necessarily tied to the prohibition, but tied to the emergency proclamation. So I'm trying to understand that connection.
Sure. City Administrator Bob Kowetz, do you want to provide some more background on where this request to waive the fee came from and the request to not have grocery stores have to handle reusable bags?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walsh. The grocery store industry, I think, made a decision without consultation based on their concern for health and safety to prohibit the use of reusable bags. Do we have the ability to question that? Certainly, my recommendation to the mayor and the council is, given, given the current situation, that it's not productive for us to question that. So since that operation has changed in the midst of this civil emergency, people no longer have the ability to use those bags based on the decision of the grocers. Therefore, there was no ability to avoid the fee by bringing your own back. So this was brought to our attention by several members of the community, by the Isqwa Chamber of Commerce. And so this ordinance, first the proclamation from the mayor, and now this ordinance really comes out of a matter of practicality. We feel that it's not fair to penalize our residents who are no longer able to use the reusable bag based on what I would say are legitimate health and safety concerns of the grocery industry. And so we would like to relieve the residents from the fee by, by doing this. Certainly, as the situation changes, this ordinance could then be put back into place, even if the civil emergency remains. I think that's the mayor's prerogative to bring that information back to the council for consideration.
Thank you. Does it answer your question, Councilmember Walsh?
Yes, I guess what I'm trying to get at, well, no. What I'm trying to get at is, is there another end date that we could put on this related to the end of prohibition of reusable shopping bags? It sounds like that wouldn't be possible because this is something coming from individual retailers. I'm just trying to see if there's any, anything that we could do rather than set a specific date.
City Administrator Bob Kowetz?
To the best of our, our figuring, the answer is no. If there is great concern about this, you could set a fixed date somewhere in the future, either for this to be revisited or if, if that fixed date is approaching, then the mayor could bring a ordinance back to the council to continue the, the prohibition of the fee. Again, where we stand right now, I don't have a good answer for you on, on a specific, other specific date.
Okay. I think Councilmember Walsh, I'll just add that the earliest that this carryout bag ban, if that's what we want to call it, is imposed, could end is at the end of the emergency declaration. And by that time, we're following everything that Washington State and King County Health is advising. And so I'm not sure that we would have all that much pushback from the grocery stores about going back to the system that we had. So that would be the earliest date. I think Councilmember De Michelle wants to make sure that if the emergency date is extended, there's at least some point that we revisit in the future, and that's why she selected January 18, 2022. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Zach Hall. I just have a quick clarifying question for my colleague, Councilmember De Michelle, if that's appropriate.
Sure.
I was just curious about the intent for the snapback provisions being all the way in 2022 and what your thought was about putting the date there instead of potentially sooner.
Yeah, thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. Thinking through what could be possible outcomes. And, and right now, we are all in new territory and have no idea how long the impacts of this current crisis are going to continue. It could, could continue for a long time. I'm thinking of other national issues like 911, where there were emergency proclamations that continued for many years afterwards in order to be able to get the resources that were needed and so forth. So I didn't want to set the date too close, but I didn't want to set it, set it too far away. And again, I thought that if a new, after the elections of 2021, this could be a question that we could take up if the emergency proclamation is still in effect. Now, if the emergency proclamation is no longer in effect, then it becomes a moot point. I just want to make sure that we're not in a situation where this just kind of drops through the cracks.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, no, no, that's good. Thank you. I appreciate that context.
Thank you. Councilmember Marks?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This was a, some, some folks may remember, Councilmember Goodman and I were both on council when this issue came before us. It was a divisive issue. It was the subject of a repeal effort by some members of the community, but it was an important piece of environmental legislation. And if somehow, horribly, if we still have to be in an emergency situation 20 months from now, or whatever the exact number is, I would hope that we would have figured out another alternative to using plastic bags. I don't know what, what that alternative would look like, but we have some time. Hopefully, this will be a moot point, and we'll be out of emergency long before then. But this was an important piece of environmental legislation that was subsequently adopted by many, many other communities. And it's important to continue to push further removal of plastic bags from the waste stream. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mar. Council President Hunt?
Yes, I have a question. I think this is maybe for City Administrator Bob Kowetz. Is there anything that would stop or would not allow council to revisit this sooner? If, for example, we, if, for example, there, there was found to be that the grocery stores were, again, allowing reusable bags much sooner than the emergency proclamation ended, could we just revisit as a council?
City Administrator Bob Kowetz?
Yes, this could be revisited at any time.
Council President Hunt? I'm going to move on to Deputy Counsel President Ray for a question.
This is just a matter of clarification because Councilmember Marks was talking about plastic bags, the ban. We're not talking about anything about re, re, re-enabling retail outlets to use plastic, are we? I mean, this is really just about waiving the $0.05 paper bag fee or this recyclable bag fee. Am I correct in that?
City Administrator Bob Kowetz?
Yes.
Okay. So there, there, under no circumstances are we looking at repealing all of this legislation and going back to disposable plastic bags in, in our shopping experience?
City Administrator Bob Kowetz?
Yes, that is correct. This is just about the fee.
Thank you. I am seeing a question from Council President Hunt?
This is Council President Hunt. I, I did already ask my question. I have, I just have a comment, which is that I think, I think that we can revisit this at any time. And given that we don't know what the, what the situation will be, I think that my, my preference would be that as a council, we commit to monitoring the situation around grocery stores and, and then we can revisit this ordinance at a time when, in a timely fashion. And so that, we don't need to tie it to the emergency, emergency proclamation, but we also don't need to tie it to the, to the elections and to a 2022 date. I think we can commit to, to revisiting this when it's appropriate.
Thank you. And I missed a few. I'm a little bit out of order. Councilmember Walsh?
I was just clarifying whether the amendment was for 2021 or 2022.
The amendment is for 2022.
Thank you.
Councilmember De Michelle?
I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Ray's comments. Right, this, this doesn't really relate to plastic bags. This is, the $0.05 fee is meant to reduce the number of paper bags that people are using and encourage the use of reusable bags. So we, so the entire intent really is to encourage reusable bags. And right now, we can't do that because of COVID-19 and the health concerns. But there will come a time, again, when we will want to encourage people to use reusable bags. And so we would want to, I presume we would want to put in place this $0.05 fee, which is meant to encourage that. And so that's the intent of this. And in terms of revisiting the, this issue at any time, that's correct. Could do it at any time. I believe we would need to, I think we would need to write an amendment that says we can, we, we will commit to revisiting the issue. Because if we leave the motion as it stands, the only option we have is for the end of the emergency period. That's my understanding. And maybe City Administrator Bob Kowetz could correct me on that. But the way that the, the ordinance reads or the way that the motion reads at this point, we have no other option than waiting for the emergency proclamation to be lifted. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions at this point in time? I'm not seeing many come up in the messaging. Council President Hunt?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. I, um, it's a, it's a question because what I heard Councilmember De Michelle saying seemed, didn't seem to agree with, with at least my understanding of what City Administrator Bob Kowetz had said earlier. So it's my understanding that, that we can revisit this and we could issue another ordinance. We could change at an interim point, and we don't actually have to put that in writing in, in, at this time. Is that right?
City Administrator Bob Kowetz?
Madam Mayor, Council President Hunt, yes. Madam Mayor, Council President Hunt, yes. Any ordinance of the city can be amended or repealed at any time, given proper notice. I think the way that this current ordinance is crafted is that if the civil emergency ends, then this ordinance would no longer be in effect, and the bag fee would be reinstated. If the council wished to take a proactive action at any other point, it could do so by ordinance.
Thanks. Look, like our city attorney, Jim Haney, might want to make a comment on whether or not there needs to be a date in here?
Actually, I was just going to echo what City Administrator Bobquid said. This is an ordinance, and council has the authority at any time to amend or repeal an ordinance. So the fact that it has a date in there is just to have it automatically expire and the bag fee come back in if the mayor terminates the emergency. But if the council at any time decides that it wants to terminate its support for this, it can come back and amend an ordinance.
Thank you. So I'm not sure if we're quite close to resolution, but it appears there are several options here. There is an amendment on the table to add a or no later date of January 18th, but the council also has the ability to come back to this at whatever time they want. So taking it step by step, I think what we'll do, if there's no more comments about the first proposal here, we'll take a vote on the amendment to the ordinance, Section 3, duration suspension, adding or no later than January 18th, 2022, whichever comes first. And I'm waiting for Council President Hunt to send a message here. Hang on one second. That's a great idea. Council President Hunt reminded me that we have also received some, council has also received some public comment this week on this item on our agenda, and I'd like to give her an opportunity to present what was submitted to council. Council President Hunt?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt, and again, this is not my comment. This is a comment we received by email from a member of the community. So we did receive one email on this item. It was from Steve Pereira, and Steve commented that he was, he did not want to see habits reversed as far as people bringing their own bags in the long term, and he was also unsure about the benefits of a suspended pass-through fee and if it was really changing people's shopping behavior or not. That was our only comment on this.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the reminder that we include that. So looking at the motion that's on the table, it's an amendment to the ordinance, Section 3, duration of suspension, adding or no later than January 18th, 2022, whichever comes first. And Tisha, can you do a roll call vote on the motion? On the amendment, sorry.
Yes. Councilmember DeMichele?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Nay.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt? Councilmember Marz?
Aye.
Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh?
Three ayes, four nays. The amendment fails. Thank you. Are there any other amendments before we move to the main motion? I will give you a second and keep my eye on the comments, messenger. Not seeing any other amendments. We will call for the vote on the main motion? No, hang on one second. Okay, let's start with the comments on the main motion. Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. Reading your proclamation, it appears that there is a, let's, let me, it says, basically suspending the requirement of payment of a pass-through charge. And so I'm wondering whether this, as written and as we are voting on, whether this still allows the grocery and retail locations to assess a pass-through charge. It just allows them to eliminate it if they so choose. Am I reading that correctly?
I will go to City Administrator Bobquid or City Attorney Haney, whoever would like to answer that question.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, let me give a try, and the city attorney can add if he believes necessary. So the ordinance will, it becomes the master document then. The mayor's proclamation was meant to be a stopgap for that, but Section 1 of the ordinance reads that grocers and other retailers shall not charge customers the pass-through charge during the period of the suspension and shall not be required to remit fees for any recycled paper carryout bags supplied to a customer during the period of suspension for which no pass-through charge was collected. So if the council, by the adoption of this ordinance, is adopting that language, again, I think as we have transitioned through these several days, the city attorney had a greater opportunity to scrub the language of the ordinance. So that would be the master language when adopted by the council.
Okay, this is Lindsay Walsh again. I appreciate that clarification. Now, my concern is if this is dated as of March 6th, and grocers and other retailers haven't necessarily known about it, or, you know, the word hasn't gotten out, are there any concerns that any of them will face legal repercussions or, you know, any kind of impact from not having suspended that fee? Are we putting them in, in a situation?
City Administrator Bobquid?
I don't believe so. Again, the ratification under Section 2 is retroactive to March 19th, so that all lines up. Jen Davis Hayes, our Economic Development Manager, I know was on the call, Madam Mayor, at the beginning. I don't know, I can't see if she is still on or not. Is she, Madam Mayor?
Going through the list. She is not on the call at this moment.
So if I may, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Walsh, we've had extensive outreach to those stores that are subject to the, the bag fee and have been very communicative with them. So I don't believe, given the circumstances of the emergency, that there's going to be any issue. I think that all of the stores that we talked to were certainly as diligent as they practically could be to suspend the, the bag fee under the mayor's proclamation.
Oh, actually, I'm going to, this is the mayor. I'm going to step back in while he, we do have Ben on the call again, if he would like to get some clarification.
If I may, Madam Mayor, Ms. Davis Hayes, did you hear my previous comments a second ago?
No, as I was dialing back in, I did not hear what you mentioned. Can you please repeat?
Just, just, I had indicated that you had done, you and your staff have done pretty extensive outreach. Could you just take a moment and talk about the outreach that you had? Councilmember Walsh raised a question about notification. If you could just take a minute to talk about the outreach that we did.
Yes, of course. Good evening, council. Again, my name is Jen Davis Hayes, and I'm the Economic Development Manager for the city. And when the proclamation was signed, we reached out by phone and also by email to the, the large grocery stores that had initially raised their concerns and informed them of this rule change. And we also shared the information through the Chamber of Commerce, and the Washington State Retailers Association sent messages out to their members, which included large and small retailers. In addition, the staff in PWE also called some of the small retailers and informed them from previous outreach that was done for the original fee for the paper bag. So we continue to inform businesses as we speak to them about this change in the collection. So the ones who have originally asked for this change are aware of it as well.
Councilmember Walsh? Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Yes, so I have a comment on the main motion. I think it makes a lot of sense. I think that the intent of the five cent fee is to encourage people to use reusable bags. They can't do that right now, so lifting that fee makes sense. I do think there is some confusion about it being a lift on the plastic bag ban. That's based on an email that we received that referred to lifting the plastic bag ban from a member of the community. So I think the messaging around what this does and doesn't do is important, and we can make sure that people know that this is just referring to the reusable paper bags and is only having to do with the fact that right now, people are not able to bring in their own reusable bags. And once that is, once that is no longer the case, and once people can use their reusable bags again, I definitely would be very interested and I'm committed to revisiting this.
Thank you, and thank you for that. This is the mayor. Thank you for that focus on the messaging. I think that's a great suggestion. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the main motion? See, you have two people typing, but it's not coming up yet. Okay. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you very much. This is Zach Hall. I see this also more broadly as a way for us to support the workers who day in and day out are working long hours in grocery stores to make sure that our community here in Issaquah has what they need to thrive while they're in their homes and while they're there every day, potentially exposed to the coronavirus. I see this as one of the least things that we can do to ensure that clerks don't have to handle bags that have been all over the place. So I think having that in mind, I'll be supporting this.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Are there any other councilmembers who wish to comment before I read the motion? I'll give you a few seconds to respond. Seeing none, the motion before the council is to adopt ordinance number 2904, suspending the pass-through charge on recycled paper carryout bags imposed under IMC 8.05 for the duration of the emergency proclaimed by the mayor, ratifying and approving the mayor's actions in suspending the charge retroactive to March 19th, 2020, declaring an emergency and providing for an immediate effective date, and providing for an immediate effective date. Tisha, can you do a roll call vote?
Councilmember DeMichele? Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt? Councilmember Marz? Deputy Counsel President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. The last item we had on our business agenda this evening, Item E, is Open Public Meetings Act. We currently refer to it as OPMA, and the requirement for a meeting place. At the point of time that we had decided to add this item onto the agenda, we had assumed that Washington State was going to potentially suspend the act. We were advised today in a briefing with the state that they are a few days away from coming up with recommendations for what to do with the Open Public Meetings Act. So while, City Administrator Bobquid, I'm not sure how we should proceed with this this evening. We're not quite at the circumstance we thought we would be today. Do you have some thoughts?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, yes, as you indicate, Madam Mayor, we don't have additional information from the Washington Attorney General on their thoughts, nor from the governor. I know that when this was discussed a few days ago, I think the, the primary piece of this was our desire, the City of Issaquah's desire to let the community know that we're committed to maintaining as much of the Open Public Meetings Act requirements as possible. The one requirement that many communities around Washington State are hoping that will be adjusted is this requirement that a physical person need to be sitting in the council chambers, as the city clerk is this evening. So we will keep the community posted as we get additional direction from the governor and the attorney general. But I think it's safe to say that the City of Issaquah remains committed to open meetings, and we'll do everything in our power to make sure the public has as much impact during this civil emergency as they would during any other time to, to comment and communicate with the council.
Thank you, City Administrator Bobquid. So we can have some comments and conversation if you'd like to now. I think City Administrator did a good job pointing out that one of the aspects that is likely to change if OPMA is suspended is the requirement for having a public space with a staff person in it. Not sure if anyone has any thoughts or comments on it. We'll definitely have an update for you later this week, because we were told that additional information was coming up. But if you have comments, I'll look to see on our messenger. And I'm seeing a couple of no comments, just waiting for everybody to weigh in. Council President Hunt?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. I wanted to encourage members of the public that do want to comment on agenda items or anything that council is working on, or, or comments that would be helpful for council to know. I wanted to encourage community members to email us. So we are receiving emails. We are all still working, and we very much welcome your messages by email or by phone. So just wanted to put that out there. While we're not encouraging public comments, we're still very much encouraging, receiving those comments.
Thank you. And I think what you mean is not encouraging public attendance, but we are definitely encouraging public comments. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, thank you. Rest of the council members have weighed in and do not have any comments, so we will wait and see what comes out of the governor's office. There is no executive session scheduled for this evening, so with there being no further business, we are adjourned at 9:09 PM. And there's a fake gavel that just closed the meeting. Thank you all for attending.